Published and or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grande.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Pala.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody. Okay, at this time I open the meeting for public comment for agenda items only. I see that nobody has signed up. Have a motion to close that portion, in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to, we do have some presentations tonight, but we're gonna do our student representative, Representative, Ms. Jagobansky, how are you this evening?
Good, I'm very good. There is not much, given that the school year is coming to a close, but everyone's very excited about all the ceremonies, like the induction ceremonies and the award ceremony coming up. We also have elections for the next year's Executive Board for Student Council. It was supposed to be tomorrow, but the date got moved, but that's, we have a very promising group, so we're excited about that. We're also in the midst of planning a senior sunset, which is gonna be really fun, because we had a senior sun ride in September, so now we're gonna kind of bring it to a close in June. And then, obviously, everyone's really excited about prom, so that's a big student thing that everyone's talking about.
And Decision Day already happened, right?
Yeah, yeah, that was on May 1st.
Filing a lot of the pictures on social media, which was really exciting.
Very fun day.
And where are you going?
I'm going to Notre Dame, so...
Very nice.
I'm very happy. It took me a while to make the decision, but I'm really happy with it.
That's awesome, well, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, lots of luck. You're free to stay and enjoy, or free to go home?
We will not be offended. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
Okay. All right, we're gonna, we'll come back to any committee reports on our end, so we're gonna jump to, we have a couple of board presentations today. I'm excited to hear the North End and South End goal presentations, so who would like to go first?
We're together.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're, I'm gonna get up and move.
Good evening. So, we're gonna walk you through our goals. North End and South End share the same goals for the year, and I won't read them verbatim to you, but our first goal was focused on mathematics and increasing our student proficiency in math by 5% as measured by multiple standardized measures of assessment. And then that same goal for ELA, but increasing by 3%, again, as measured by multiple standardized assessments. And then our third goal was to develop and implement opportunities during each trimester to engage students and families in activities that foster academic success. So, we thought we'd first talk a little bit about those multiple measures of assessments that we identified, that we're going to look at, and so, they're listed there, our Linkit benchmarks in grades one through four would be a part of that, as well as STAR in grades K through two, our DRA assessments in grades K-4. Keep in mind, kindergarten does their DRAs in the spring. NJSLA, of course, our standardized assessments in grades three and four, and then, of course, classroom assessments and performance is also a part of that indicator. And, of course, at this point, we're finishing those end-of-the-year assessments, Linkit data and whatnot. NJSLA has, we finished at North End, we're, you finished at South End, and we just finished those things, but, so now, now they're finalizing their STAR, their Linkit, and the DRAs. They're working on those things now. And then, once those are completed, then we'll take a look at that data to determine those achievement and growth points, and see where, see where we are. So, what have we done to support ELA and mathematics throughout the year? So, one of the things that we did across both schools was we implemented what we're referring to as WIN, which stands for What I Need, and looking at targeting specific needs. So, by looking at our multiple data sources from the beginning of the year, even the middle of the year, and so on, we've looked at what are the strengths and patterns of weakness that we need to identify, and then, of course, our students, I mean, I'm sorry, our grade levels meet during their collaboration time, and then identify targeted small group instruction that they would be focusing on during that time.
And since WIN was relatively new this year for us, there were things that had to be worked out, but I think that we've kind of found a good spot and have looking to tweak it for the coming school year.
So, then, we're also looking at if children are not being successful as it relates to the classroom instruction and/or those small groups, then what other kinds of supports can be put into place, and, of course, the multi-tiered system of supports, whether that is a referral to the INRS Committee for Intervention and Referral Services, or if they're eligible for ELA or math intervention, as well as our pathways after-school tutoring and the High Impact Tutoring Grant, those students that were eligible for that as well. And then, also, one of the other things that we were using is in grades three and four, Edgelastic, in order to prepare students for proficiency. That's a web-based program that helps students work towards identifying how children are doing towards mastery of specific standards in each grade level. Additionally, we, as it relates to professional development, we did several things, one of the, one of which being, we planned and provided targeted professional development centered on guiding readers, and we provided that professional development based on best practices in a variety of small group structures. So, in other words, what are teachers doing with children in those small groups, and what are the focus of that? So, for example, we worked through unwrapping specific standards and looking at what are those skills and those strategies and things that we need to put into place to help children achieve that particular standard, or whatever the focus is for that particular grade level or group. The other thing, Mrs. Masada was very good at, as during that, those trainings, when we had those consults with our representatives, Mrs. Masada was very good at memorializing all of that PD. She created folders in our Google classrooms, and then videos and comprehensive notes for teacher reference to go back to after those trainings. They also, the children, or the teachers also received professional development in the use of Edgelastic for grades three and four. We also put into place a program referred to as Critical Friends, where teachers are able to go into and observe other classrooms with teachers implementing certain things within their classroom to kind of get an idea of other ideas that they may learn from their teacher next door. And then, also, pop-up PD, something else that Mrs. Masada did with new teachers that hadn't gone through our Conquer Math training in the years past, and so, it was voluntary. Teachers were able to sign up and go to those professional development opportunities based on best practices in mathematics.
I just want to go back to Critical Friends for a moment. The joy that we find in it is we get to go in and cover the teachers, so we get to spend some time with the kids, working on, you know, whether it be SEL, or just sitting, reading a book to them, discussing the book, and it gets us back to our roots, I guess you could say, which is enjoyable for us. Exactly. So, I'm gonna look at our Actions for Community Building, which was our third goal, and, of course, without even hesitation, the first thing that comes to mind is our FSAs. We know that they provide so many opportunities for our children, and also to bring families into the school through volunteering, and I think that's a very important piece when we talk about engaging community, because we know that when kids see their parents or family members in school, they know that it's important. And so, for little kids, you know, they're always looking for their moms or dads to be there and to help out. So, our FSA activities, there's Family Math Night, they organize our book fairs twice a year, holiday shop for the kids to, to purchase things, the plant sales, and we can go on and on. They provide assemblies for us that are sponsored by the parents as well. Social media connections, there is something that every teacher uses, whether it be Class Dojo, Facebook, Instagram, to connect to the parents and to tell their story of what's happening in the classroom. So, when children come home and say, "What did you do in school today?", it's, it's a point of discussion instead of hearing, you know, "We didn't do anything in school today", you know? That, that Facebook prompts, or that Instagram prompts a discussion on some of the great things happening in our classrooms, so that connects the family to the school. Our kindergarten, as you know, always has their academically-based special days, Apple Day, Pumpkin Day, Turkey Day, special kindergartner, where a parent comes in and reads to the class. So, that's important to make that connection with the, with the community as well. All the parent visits and presentations regarding cultural heritage, at any time, a parent is welcome to come in to share their stories as well.
And our teachers invite them, especially at different times during the year when it's appropriate, and put it out there to them and say, "Is there something that you would like to share?", and so, they open up those opportunities often.
We have different parents-students reading activities that went on this year. Of course, Read Across America, we always open outdoors to the community to come in, to parents to come in and read. We also had a Read-Athon, Read Across the Bases, and a Read Bowl, and just to let you know, it's the first year that some children took part in the Read Bowl at, at South End, and our fourth grade class, Ms. Reed's class, were New Jersey champions, because they read, they read so many minutes over the course of the time, so they were very, very proud of that. They even stayed in at recess time to read, so you have to really give them a shout-out, because that's, that's big for fourth graders.
To give up recess.
Yes, to give up recess.
That's stuff.
But, yeah. The school climate team engages all stakeholders. There's teachers, administrators, parents on that team. That is a New Jersey state mandate. They come, we, we meet and discuss things that we can do to promote in our buildings a positive school climate, whether that's the Week of Respect, Dress Up Spirit Days, kindness activities, you know, one of the things that's important is to have parents involved in that, so we have those different perspectives of what's happening. We have ongoing communication between our classroom teachers and parents throughout the school year, that never changes. Our teachers and our parents are always in communication with each other for the good of the student. We have many resources available through our school websites. Our interventionists have a website with great resources for parents to tap into. Our Counselor's Corner is always publishing different resources for parents as well, the Nurses page, Speech page, all these resources are accessible to parents. And special activities that are designed to engage students, of course, our Open House, that always is the start of our year, and that's how we, in the beginning of every year, engage parents to be part of our process and to be part of our community. Parent conferences, the concerts, art show, Field Day, media center activities. This year, Ms. Fitzpatrick did a wonderful job with, the kids are going home for winter break, and she did a winter book bingo to encourage reading. We had a Read-Athon type of activities, where they could enter a raffle if they read so many books, or, you know, whatever, to get them to read over that week off, so we didn't lose that time. And, of course, she had Character Pumpkin Days, where they dressed up the pumpkin like a book, and it just gives kids that opportunity to be motivated to learn, and it brings the family into it. Questions?
No, I'm not having questions. First one I have is, and I'm asking both of you, because nobody else here answered. I'm really concerned with that. We're investing in a new math series. It's going K-2, and I can't understand why that's the case. All right, education, pedagogy, everything in my mind tells us that that should go K-2, and that we should be dropping two grades from the fourth grade in the coming year, because then that is indicating that group is going to be, just getting to Go Math for the next three years, all right, until they get to the individual program in sixth grade, all right? Why we would leave that out? In my mind, there's three reasons, and I'm not gonna share right now, but I'm wondering if you can share with me why we're not using the new math series in grades three and four?
From my understanding, it was to kick it off in kindergarten, so there was the consistency of language coming up the line, the consistency of the way the skills were outlined, and to bring it out. I think when we did Go Math, and I'm going back, and, Ms. Dyer, if you recall, we had tossed that conversation around when we were looking at it, and one of the things that we had hoped to do was to unroll it in, you know, in increments like that, but we decided to go then with the whole K-4, and there seemed to be some, some debate over it then too. I think it...
Pedagogy, there's no debate on that. In that, in that.
Well, I think, I think the part of the conversation too, as Mrs. Mattio started to say, was the fact that, you know, there's language that is used within a program, and if they're not exposed to that language, it becomes confusing if you start in third grade and you don't have that basis, for example, from, from those earlier grades.
If they don't start in the third and the fourth, they gotta start in the fifth. So, what I'm saying is, there's a gap in the program. The progression's not like a world language, where you're taking a child that's been in one, one series in levels one and two, and taking them to three and four in the same level, and starting at a new level. You're talking about a math program that's being implemented, and you have it in between those grades right now, that's my point. You're not graduating into it all the way up. The middle school has invested in that program already, all right? So, what we've said is, said, "All right, three and four, you're not yet, you're staying with Go Math, even though we know that it's problematic math series, it's not challenging, and it's not gonna take those kids anywhere." And I'm trying to understand the logic behind not going K to four. I know, I, I have my ideas, but I'm not willing to say to public.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are there plans to switch over to the same program for grades three and four?
Yes, the ones that are in K-2.
In the near future.
Will be coming up with each year being implemented.
So, three and four will never get it.
So, how...
Till they get to the middle school.
Well, I think that's the conclusion.
Well, I think they would get it in four, right? Because two would have it, they would bring it up the next year to three, four.
So, September 25 is the plan to implement it in three, four?
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
September 24th, who get it in two, will have it for three.
So, your, your current second graders will not have it for third grade, but they will have it for four?
Current second graders, yes.
Correct. But that'll be the only gap from there on out, and you'll fill in those other gaps progressively.
So, you're saying that, that the, the new series will be introduced in grades three and four next year?
That's my understanding.
Twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Not next year.
Right, right, the following, correct, correct.
So, the first graders will never, will continue it?
That will continue, yes.
Yes, yes.
I'm not sure if there's a budgetary question too with that, if, if that was the reasoning, I'm not sure.
That was one of the things I noticed. But, I would say that the finance should never preclude moving the program forward, when you know the district program isn't doing what it needs to do for the kids. You know, that's one of those areas where, it's like, you know, something we talked about later, you gotta find one. You know, I'm still not comfortable with that they're going K to two on this. I think this needs to go K to four, and everybody should be part of the program, and then they will transition easier to the middle school. We have a lot of people always talking to us about, they're concerned about the transition from grades four to five, and everything that goes along with that. And now you're gonna throw that fourth grader into the math series, because they're never gonna get it till they get to the middle school. What you just told me is what happened.
So, let me ask a question, and I don't know if you have any answers, but like Mr. Pala said.
Yeah, it'd be the only one here.
Right, so, so I'm assuming there's gonna be PD associated with the introduction of the K to two, and then we're gonna repeat it, the professional development for three for the following year? Has there been any discussion about that?
I'm not familiar with how they're unrolling the PD.
Did you guys principals make a recommendation to them about what we should do?
We had conversations about it, and, you know, we also have been talking about Conquer Math, because that professional development, that comprehensive professional development, was something that we did invest in, and now we have several new teachers that also need to be a part of that as well. So, you know, I think that was the other part of the focus, that I know that that, you know, we did the pop-up PDs this year for those teachers that hadn't been exposed to it, but that has been something that, that has been something that's been budgeted for next year as it relates to getting that professional development for all those new teachers as well.
And the beauty that we saw in Conquer Math was that it was teaching teachers to teach math, not to a particular series, and I think that those teachers who have not benefited from that really would, no matter what series we chose, bringing them into an environment of PD where they're looking at, "How do we teach math correctly?", is this, is more valuable than, you know, just for them hearing that textbook.
Do you have a position as the building, as the education leader of the building? Do you have a position on what math program the third and fourth grade should have?
I've said it since I got here, I'm gonna say this, what have I said all along? I don't think it has anything to do with the program, I think it has to do with the professional development as, as it relates to teaching instruction for mathematics.
It's important then, as they go, the teachers.
So, I think that is a resource, whether it's Envision, Go Math, Investigations, there's tons of options out there, but I think the professional development is the most important part of it, as it relates to teaching mathematics, as opposed to just turning in a binder and turning to the next page.
We saw a huge difference when the teachers started, even through the first year of Conquer Math, and the way that math was being implemented in the classroom and taught in the classroom, and we, we noticed that the teachers who have not benefited from that are catching up, they're playing catch-up, and so, we had expressed that that is a need.
And they're, they're more reliant on the manual as opposed to getting kids investigating and having them build and work through things, and so, yeah.
The instructional practices, the reviews are critical to teaching those subjects, and I agree a hundred percent of it. You know, as, and I said earlier, I would be redundant in my statements, but it's a major concern moving forward, for the academic growth of this district, not just the individual talent, but I think this is a really important decision to go K to two and get the other grades out. I would, and as a board, we'll have to do, have to talk about that.
Thank you for clarifying some of our uncertainties. Appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions, or have any questions for us? Good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Okay, all right. So, we're gonna move into some committee reports. Mr. Grande, I'm gonna start on your end.
I don't have anything to report about the board.
Okay. Mr. Pala?
There were no, no committee reports in the first-hand instruction, there was no reading, as there had was no reading with personnel, no information.
Mr. Marzullo?
The only thing I have to report on was the middle school FSA, which I attended last night. You know, Mr. Decort just basically, you know, gave us a synopsis of all the year-end happenings, which I don't have a list of, you know, but, and the promotions and all going on, but others, aside from that, no other committee reports.
Mrs. Keegan?
Sorry.
No. And then, well, we, we, we attended the FSA, the South End FSA, it was such a nice turnout.
It was.
It was a nice turnout. Did the results?
Yes, they came in.
They came in, okay. So, they had the, the board voting, and so, we were able to address the sitting boards, and I'm assuming some of the coming board members were there too. And so, Mrs. Keegan and I had an opportunity to speak with them and kind of update them on some of the things that were going on. I know Mr. Pala attended the North End, and...
Very similar.
Yep, very similar, well-attended.
They raised thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah. Some of that money was mine.
Couple of them were mine.
And yours.
Mine.
Yes, I came home empty-handed, but it was a lot of fun. So, congratulations to the new boards coming in, and thank you to the boards going out from all the FSAs. As far as our leadership transition, where we're at, just a quick update, I know I did, gave an update at the last meeting, it's just a continuation, and we shared this at the FSA meetings, that Dr. T has been in the district on multiple days, he's continuing to meet with all the administrators, he's meeting with the department supervisors, directors, I think he's met with pretty much all administration at this point. No, I said this the other night too, you got, because you, the date got changed.
That's right, because I was in deposition.
Yes, yes. So, and then he's touring all the buildings and having opportunities to meet one-on-one, and really is build, starting to build those relationships. I reported at the last meeting that he has met with our town manager, he has met with our mayor, those communications are continuing, I know they have a couple other dates on the calendar. I shared with FS, the FSA committees that the next step is, Mr. Pala is working with the president of the North End FSA to coordinate a time where he could meet with the boards of all the middle school, the high school APT, North and South End FSA boards, to build that relationship. And then, once all of those people have been, and had been given an opportunity, then in early June, we will be setting up opportunity for the community members to be able to meet with him. So, I'm excited about it, it's been very positive. I've got a lot of positive feedback from a lot of the staff that have already met with, with him, so I feel really good about it. The board is really excited about what lies ahead, and we look forward to moving into that next chapter for the district. So, all I got at this point, we don't, Mike, do you have anything as the stand-in superintendent report tonight?
Nope, no board.
All right, well, then, we're gonna move to our resolutions. Under the Business Administrators' Report, can I have a motion for G1 through G18, please?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Moving to page 11, under Superintendent's Report, under General Administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H4?
So, move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, except abstain from H3, A and B.
Sorry, Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Human Resources, under the Superintendent's Report, can I have a motion for H1 through H17?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to congratulate Alan Mills, our middle school special education teacher, on his retirement. I wish him lots of luck, thank him for his service, and good luck on his retirement. Any other discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pala.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. And so, we are moving to page, so that was a big one. Thirty. Thirty. Under Special Services, a motion for K1 and K2, please. Oh, did I, I'm sorry, I did. Under Curriculum and Instruction. Oh, did I, I'm sorry, I did. Under curriculum and instruction, J one to J two.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Palick?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dora?
Yes. Now, under special services, a motion for K one and K two. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Palick?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dora?
Yes. All right, this time I'd like to open this portion of the meeting for public comment. Any items, any school-related items? We do have Christine Palomara.
Christine Palomara. I'm a staff member, Cedar Grove High School.
Could you just say your address?
I live at twenty-two Overlook Road.
Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to help each of you put a face to a name. I've been a staff member since 2020 during the height of COVID, soon after my only living parents' death and recovering from an illness that took me out of teaching into 2019. I was nervous, masks, remote instruction, and a new school at the same time, but I remembered something about this job. My third day of setting foot in a classroom as a teacher was on September eleventh, two thousand and one. I was right over the Hudson River. The sounds and the sights, the smells permeated my classroom windows. The chaos and the fear and the losses that my students endured that day were unimaginable. But on September thirteenth, school was in session. And at twenty-seven years old, I knew my calling. I clearly remember my interview with Mr. Groso when discussing the challenges that lay ahead with COVID. I assured him that nine eleven taught me that my job was not only to teach my students, but to keep them safe, to lift them up, to guide them, and to simply just love them. And that's what I do, and that's what we all do, without hesitation, without reservation, and unfortunately, much of the time, without recognition. I stand here four years later, and if anyone bothered to take a look, my track record speaks for itself. The words non-tenured mean many things, don't they? For most, it means novice, young, with nothing but an undergraduate degree in hand, and the promise of a lifelong career that, in the end, we pray, will offer us some financial stability and personal satisfaction. But for some of us, non-tenure means starting over. It means risk-taking and blind faith, while being reminded constantly, "Your job is not safe." And yes, that is the hard truth, and I accept that. I also accept the realities of this situation: low enrollment, financial crisis. Being one of the most seasoned teachers with advanced degrees, my non-tenure status makes me the perfect storm. I was told a reduction in force prevents me from being moved forward through the Cedar Grove School District. However, it is not documented as such. I'm here to respectfully ask for the documentation to reflect a reduction in force. I'm a teacher. I will continue to teach with all of the passion that I know it takes to be excellent. All I ask is that I not be a loophole or an easy out to avoid any backlash for things that go above and beyond my scope and my position. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you, Mrs. Palomara. I can answer your question, because we're based on a recommendation from our superintendent, so he's not here to speak to that, but I certainly will follow up with that. Okay, I do not have anyone else on the list, so before I close that session of the meeting. Okay? Can I have a motion to close this session of public comment? All right, announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be June eighteenth. Closed session will be at six-thirty, regular session at seven-thirty, and it will be at Memorial Middle School, and then again on July thirtieth, same times, and that will be at the High School Auditorium. Motion to close the meeting, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.